We're on the record.
Good evening. We'll call this Township Council meeting of June 15th, 2021 to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 18th, 2020, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the Newark Star-Ledger on December 22nd, 2020, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 18th, 2020. Note: Council meetings are videotaped and aired on public access Channel 21 at 7:00 PM Sundays and Wednesdays and are also available for viewing at www.parcippany.net. Would you all join me in the flag salute? Well, you want to lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Karifi?
Here.
Ms. Grignani?
Here.
Ms. McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. DePiro?
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor Michael Soriano, Business Administrator Frederick Carr, Township Attorney Jim Lott, Township CFO Juan Yaribe, and Township Clerk Colette Madden, Council President. We have a quorum; you may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings: July 6th, 7:00 PM Agenda Meeting; July 20th, 7:00 PM Regular Meeting. Presentation of Reports, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. First of all, it's good to all be here for our second in-person meeting and the beginning of us returning to a new normal. I would say, for myself personally, last year, a very demoralizing day for me last year was July 4th. Not having our usual concert and fireworks and not being able to celebrate American independence was difficult for everyone, but I will tell you personally, I felt it. However, this year, I'm happy to announce that we are going to have our Independence Day fireworks on July 4th at no cost to the taxpayers. The Township of Parsippany was able to get a donation from a private organization called Onyx Properties. They are now a landowner in the MacCallie complex, and they are paying the full boat, everything: the fireworks, the security, the policing, everything. And we are very grateful to them, especially during such hard economic times that we've had here in the township and budget, you know, revenue shortfalls. So we're very grateful to them, and I look forward to seeing everyone there where we can celebrate together. That concludes my report. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. That's excellent. Maybe we can do a resolution or proclamation after the fact and invite them here to thank them.
That'll be fun. That'll be easy to do, absolutely. Good.
Okay, up to Township Council. I have something. When the information went out regarding the SROs, as Council President and with my number in the phone book, I got 12 phone calls, some of them quite threatening. Some of them telling me that they voted for me and they want the SROs back, don't I dare remove them. So I think it's appropriate at this point in time to publicly state that the council never discussed removing SROs, never voted on it, never discussed it, and have no intention of supporting anything that goes in that direction. So I just wanted that on the record, especially those who made phone calls to me and didn't leave their names or numbers.
And, Mr. Council President, did I ever suggest removing the SROs at any point?
No, but it got out there somehow.
Yeah. Thank you.
I have a question. CFO Juan, do we have any information on our budget?
Well, what I could say at this point is that probably...Fred, did you have any report related to it?
No, I didn't.
We're working on it. We expect to have finalized budget not later than this week. We had to get some updates from the Division of Local Government Services within the Department of Consumer Affairs of the state. As of last Friday, they came up with new guidance of the federal American Rescue Plan, and the update that they provided, the translation of all of the legal laws related to that program, was still being a little bit ineffective in terms of a budget, which is a little bit more complex than the majority of budgets within the state at this point. So we're waiting on some additional guidance regarding revenues, which is the problem. We have a shortfall of revenue, which we thought we could anticipate, for example, the note, the special emergency note, that is not the case. So we've been in conversations with them, but either way, we expect to have a budget finalized this week.
Okay. Also...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. On that note, okay? When you say finalized, you mean certified too, right?
No.
Well, not certified, sir, because that takes a lot longer. We meant to finish...
Well, we originally, if I may...
There you go.
Sorry. So, the intent, as we've said before, Council President, is that we provide, our no-later-than-date was 6th of July, for the council to introduce it. The only person who can certify the budget is the CFO. Now, the auditor has to look at it, obviously, and the council has to introduce that, but...
We're not gonna...just for clarification, we're not going to accept the budget until it's certified by the auditor. That's a legitimate budget.
Correct.
You have to be working with her to get her to certify it.
We will...we are doing that. We are doing that. She has to see it before it comes through the council, and it will be balanced at the request of the council prior to the 6th of July. The auditor will see it and be able to do that.
We're working with the auditors.
You are working with the auditor as the finance subcommittee has suggested?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
We specifically ask if the auditor has any, you know, suggestions or anything like that, as you probably saw or know, that she said she doesn't want, you know, she can't do that, and that's fine.
Well, she can't suggest changes in the budget.
Correct. But we're correct, so we are...we know that she has to attest or certify, as you use the word, as to the validity of the budget prior to the council adopting that or introducing the budget, so we are working that way.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
We're aware of that. Our problem from day one has been, you know, is DCA says one thing and turns around and says something else. Make up your mind.
Okay.
Other than that, we're fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Juan.
You have something else?
Nope, that's it.
Anybody else on the council? Township Attorney?
I have two issues for closed session, as indicated on the agenda: SRO contract negotiations with Board of Education and Karifi litigation.
Okay. Thank you. Business Administrator?
Sir, I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Township Clerk?
No report at this time. Thank you.
Any committee reports from township offices?
None. None this time.
Okay. Bids taken: June 9th, 2021, Puddingstone Heights Road Reconstruction Program Phase 1, Item 2, June 10th, 2021, various parks, court resurfacing renovation projects for Parsippany Parks Department, rebid. Bids to be taken: June 22nd, 2021, operation of catering banquet restaurant and teahouse facilities and provision of related services at Knoll Country Club. That's a rebid. June 23rd, Bruton Water Tank Painting and Rehabilitation. And now, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing for this Puddingstone Park project.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call. Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
The floor is open to speak on the Puddingstone Park project only.
Council President, if I may, so for all of us who were here two weeks ago, this is the exact same public notice that we had before.
I recognize it.
Yes, very good. So I'm glad everybody was awake. No change. When we advertised in the newspaper, we advertised the wrong date.
Okay.
And so we're still into discussions with the Puddingstone and with the Green Acres to fix the two tennis courts up there and convert one of them into a tennis court with asphalt and one tennis court, just for tennis court, one basketball, one tennis court.
Okay.
Our conversation with Puddingstone is also that they have to understand with the residents up there that if we make public improvements to that, it becomes public usage. Anybody can use it.
Right.
And they've sort of balked at that, and that's okay.
I thought that anyone from this end of town is gonna go over there to play basketball.
But they have that opportunity. It's not a private park.
Exactly.
It's not a private park.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Seeing no one come forward, entertain a motion to close.
I think we got...before we have Nick here, go ahead, Nick. Make it quick. No, I'm just kidding. Come on up.
I didn't see you, Nick. Sorry.
Nicholas Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. How many people actually use this recreational area now? Is it just strictly that neighborhood?
Do you know where that neighborhood is?
I've been there a few times.
Okay, it's kind of remote from the rest of the town.
Yeah, it is.
So basically, it's all the residents in that area. It's not closed, it will not be closed to anybody else, but all of those people are the ones using it.
And do they expect anybody else from any other section of town that's actually gonna use this?
I don't think so.
But it was grant money, right?
Anyone else, anyone, any other resident in the town can use it. They, once we use, once we use public money.
All right, but how much of all of our tax dollars, if any, is involved with this, or is it strictly a Greenacre grant?
So, yes, sir. There's a 50%, so it's about a $40,000 project, about a $20,000 Green Acres match.
All right, that's not a lot of money.
It's not a lot of money, but, you know, the issue is when you use public money to fix public things and the public gets to use it. That's been like that in the state of New Jersey for 20 years and change.
And the state of this area was warranted all these upgrades or whatever, was there anything actually wrong with it to begin with?
Yes, it's a clay court.
Okay.
It's an old clay court. It absolutely needs a lot of work.
All right.
And when you get Green Acres money, there's always strings attached. All right, now, no one else coming forward? Motion to close?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call. Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to open hearing to the public on any matter whatsoever.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call. Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
The floor is now open to the public on any matter.
Come forward, you have five minutes to speak. Sign in, state your name and address.
Nicholas Homiak, 26 O'Naidy Avenue, Lake Hiawatha. I'd like to make a, just a remark about the overabundance of political signs during this last primary. It was, it's actually a form of trash in the environment. So I'd like to know, is there a quirk? Do they have a limit to take down, to take these signs down? I understand from reading, but I missed a lot. You could actually collect a $5 fine for every sign that's not taken down. But the other problem was they're in a lot, they were in public spaces. If you're running for political office, you should obey the rules. You shouldn't put them on Green Acres property, parks, front of the Lake Hiawatha library. You shouldn't do these things. And with the media and everything going on, we should be seeing less and less signs. Now, I met someone from Canada. Up there, you have, you could only put the signs out two weeks before an election, and they have to be down two weeks after the election, or you're fined. The other thing I'd like to know, is there any action going on with the Knoll Golf Course with their river-sensitive program that they were supposed to look into and have a liaison person come? Is, did any of that ever take place?
Is that all your questions, Sid?
And my final question, if we're meeting here in the town hall, why isn't it like the zoning Board of Adjustments tomorrow? How come they're not open to the public? Is it because the crowd may shut them down, which in my opinion favors the developer? They're still on the web. But if everything is open to the public, then we should go back to the way we did it before. And if 200 people show up, go to, open up the school, get the auditorium, you know, make them jump through the fiery hoop.
Mr. Council President, may I?
Sure.
That's, the zoning Board of Adjustments is a semi-judicial body that is independent of this, of this governing body. They operate under their own rules.
I'm gonna wait for them to finish before...
Yeah.
Are you done?
You're done?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Then that's fine. I was gonna say, the Board of Adjustment is an autonomous body.
Yeah.
They make that, you can ask them that question.
Yeah, we have no control.
Yeah.
But from a functional standpoint, Nick, it's pretty simple. When they provided public notice as required by law, they were still meeting by Zoom. After the notices went out, we moved back into this building, it was too late. So they kept those meetings that had already been noticed to let the application move forward.
I just don't like the idea of it, because to me, it favors the present developer over the community, because it doesn't give the community a chance to show their face in person.
Sure.
So, okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else wish to come forward?
Can I just say, before the next person speaks?
Sure.
Can we have somebody check in with the Knoll on their river-friendly initiative?
I have a note.
Great. Thank you.
Hi, my name is...hi, my name's Allison Cogan. I live at 4 Faber Road in Parsippany.
You can touch it, it's okay.
It has a sign.
I mean, it might break.
You don't have to touch it.
Given our history of that mic.
Yeah, we could probably take it down.
Allison Cogan, 4 Faber Road in Parsippany, and I am the Vice President of the Board of Education, and I am speaking on behalf of the Board of Education. The SRO agreement between the Board of Education and the Township is a shared services agreement. It was originally created to meet the needs of both entities by maximizing services while minimizing the taxes and costs to the residents. The agreement lays out both parties' obligations and the timelines and opportunities to adjust the terms of the contract. The contract indicates that negotiations or changes should be discussed beginning in the spring, and the Board has been proactive in requesting feedback and updates from the Township since earlier this year. The Board's budget is due in the beginning of May, and we budgeted for the continuation of the shared services agreement, even though no agreement was signed and there was no specific information from the Township on what you wanted the contract to contain. In early June, the Township indicated that it did not have an interest in signing the current shared service agreement, now stating that they need to look at it more closely. That leaves the taxpayers and the Board in a very precarious situation of having to find alternative solutions with less than two weeks remaining in the current school year. The Board wishes to continue this mutually beneficial program and would like the Township to keep the current agreement and accept the Board's financial contribution to the SRO officers and program. The Board understands that the Township has not passed its budget and needs to fill a gap. In light of that, the Board has asked the Township to consider, if not the three-year agreement, just a renewal for the upcoming year. So my question is, will a contract be signed before this contract ends? Thank you.
That matter is the subject of some proposed negotiation between the Township and the Board, and it's a closed-session item for discussion tonight.
Hold on, Tim, before you start, we gotta bring the mic up. Just so we have you for the record. Thank you.
Tim Barrios, 24 Farmstead Drive. I am a member of the Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Education, and I am speaking on behalf of myself and not speaking on behalf of the Board. As a proud member of your Board of Education, I am often asked what some of my proudest moments on the Board are. There have been so many, but there are two that stand out. One in the spring of 2016 and the other in September 2018. In 2016, I voted yes on the initial shared services agreement with the Township for four school resource police officers and one director of security. We stood outside the Dr. Frank A. Calebia Education Center with then-Mayor Barberio and Lieutenant Dowd, among other Township dignitaries, and made the announcement to the community. My second proudest moment was again in September 2018, as we renewed the shared services agreement and added the Class III officers for the elementary schools. We signed the agreement in the Board Office with Mayor Soriano and dignitaries. Those were indeed proud moments as a Board Member representing our community. The news that the shared services agreement is in jeopardy is highly disturbing to me as a Board Member, but also as a parent whose children have gone through this district. As a Board, we have fulfilled our obligations to the town by having budgeted our portion of the school resource officers. We should be able to look forward to a normal, safe opening of the school year in September 2021, especially after coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic, and the school resource officers and Class III officers are an important part of that normal school year. I encourage your Township officials to come together and work through these budget difficulties so then we can ensure parents, students, teachers, and families a positive and safe 2021-2022 school year. I would also like to add that over the last 36 hours, we have had a lot of information that's gone out to the electronic press in this town. I am stating for the fact that as of 9 o'clock this morning, we do not have a shared services agreement for the 2021-2022 school year, no matter what happens in closed session today. Nothing that the Board has done has been erroneous, and we, or I, as a Board Member, would never mislead the public on a matter as sensitive as child safety. When this all gets done, when it's all said and done, I hope that at least some of us on this dais would stand up and make a public apology to the working members of the Board of Education who work very hard for no pay to make sure our children are safe and educated. Thank you.
I'm sorry, is he representing himself with the Board of Ed? I couldn't tell.
I represent myself.
You sounded like you were representing the Board of Ed.
No, that's wrong.
And you're wearing a Board of Education shirt?
Because I like the shirt.
It's very pretty on you.
Anyone else wish to come forward? See, no one come forward. I understand a motion to close?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call. Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Budget, second reading in public hearing, ordinance 2021:12. Ordinance authorizing a special emergency appropriation in the amount of not to exceed $2.3 million or such other lesser amount as certified by the Director of the Division of Local Government Services for the purposes set forth in NJSA 40A:4-53 (L) and/or NJSA 40A:4-53 (M) in and by the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills in the County of Morris, New Jersey. The notice for ordinance 2012 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, on June 7th, 2021, and introduced at the June 21st, 2021 Agenda Meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2021:12 be heard in its second and final reading by title only by myself.
Is there a second?
Second. Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call. Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Public hearing on this ordinance only. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2021-12.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call. Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
The floor is open to the public to speak on this ordinance only.
Nicholas Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. There's such a big deal about this $2 million-something, but I have to, I don't understand where, why, why weren't we upset when the Board of Education found $4.7 million mysteriously in their budget for turf fields? $4.7, at least, for turf? After we had a referendum in this town, no turf, and they had their turf anyway, but the money was found mysteriously. There wasn't any big, you know, turmoil about that, and then we had the loss of our local open space money for something that could have been zoned as a non-structural stormwater component to that mall up there. So they took our local open space money, about $4 million, that went to the developer, RD, seemed like a kickback to me, but there was no turmoil. Now, budget, 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 and we're being, the municipality is being attacked by its own Board of Education. I, you know, really, in the United States of America, $2 million in a town like ours, it's chump change. So if we need the money and for whatever circumstances that developed it, they listen to Councilwoman McCarthy, they would understand, and do what you have to do. But you can't make a big storm in a teacup about one thing and just completely act like other things didn't, didn't happen. And that was a lot more money that disappeared from this municipality. So I'm glad the money's gonna be had or passed or whatever, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else come forward, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2021-12.
Thank you.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call. Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title and second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance 2021-12.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call. Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 2021:13, amending and supplementing Chapter A 445, fees, compilation of the code. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on June 15th, 2021, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on July 20th, 2021, at 7:00 PM prevailing time or soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given the opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve Resolution 2021:13 by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Loretta?
Ordinance 2021:14, establishing Chapter 77 related to cannabis regulation and amending Chapter 430 zoning to conditionally permit certain cannabis establishments in designated zone districts. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on June 15th, 2021, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on July 20th, 2021, at 7:00 PM prevailing time or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve Resolution 2021:14 by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Non-consent agenda, Resolution R 2021-115, rejecting the bids for operation of catering banquet restaurant, tea house facilities and related services at the Knoll Country Club. Motion to approve the resolution above by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Consent agenda?
Sorry. Be it resolved, all items listed with an asterisk are routine and non-controversial by the Township Council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda by myself.
Thank you.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Approval payroll and bills list, CFO Juan Uribe recommends authorization for payment, authorize payment of the June 25th, 2021, regular miscellaneous payroll estimated at $1,650,000. Payment of bills from voucher list of 61521 through 61721, it's $2,652,645.78. Motion to approve unauthorized payment from the above by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Executive session. One second, sorry. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Township Council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss contract negotiations, Board of Education, and whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills. I have the wrong information.
Now, this.
One moment, please.
This, this resolution only has one item, it should be two.
Yes, now, here's two, my mistake, Mr.
Oh, you have a new one?
Council President, my mistake. Whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss contract negotiations, renewal of the school resource officer, SRO, and Class III Special Officer, SLEO3, agreement with Parsippany Troy Hills Township School District, attorney-client privilege, Karifi litigation and arbitration, and where our minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills that the public be excluded from this meeting. Motion to adjourn into closed session by myself.
Second.
Before I go into roll call, I just want to announce to the public and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lot, we do not anticipate any action to be taken after this closed session. With that being said, motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Okay, we're now adjourned to a closed session, thank you. On the record now, so we need a motion to reconvene and to open session, please.
Motion.
Second, Grignani?
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
We're now in open session, could I please have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Peterson.